Please rise and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome everybody to September 10th meeting of the Ryenbeck Village Board. First item on the agenda is our county legislator, Joel Tyner.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
So, the county executive and I don't agree always, every day, on all the issues, but I do want to give County Executive Malinger credit where credit is due. For the second year in a row, he's agreed to have a county online budget survey. And it's pretty easy if you go to DutchessNY.gov, the official website for Dutchess County Government, you can get to the online county budget survey. It's something I've been pushing for for the last four years. It was launched last year, it's happening again this year. The 25 of us in the legislature plus the county executive, we exercise no monopoly and not wisdom. You know, we're just ordinary people, so we're looking for your help. You know, I try to push different ways to close the deficit. We are dealing with $27 million budget deficit. I pointed out a lot of different ways we could reform the criminal justice system. But also wanted to, that invitation there, you know, first, Lucille Patterson was one of the best county executives ever in the state and the country. And so I'm doing what I can to sort of preserve, I don't want to say restore her legacy, but a lot of what she did has been lost in county government over the last couple decades. So I'm inviting you all to a forum just across the street. That's Monday, September 30th at 5:30 PM, Ryenbeck Town Hall. We had a Human Rights Commission under Lucille Patterson. We had an office, so I believe, Consumer Affairs. The mental health care system hadn't been privatized and destroyed to the point where, you know, folks in Ryenbeck are justifiably and understandably constipated about what's been happening on 47 West Market Street because of the privatization. And 14 years ago, Lucille and I wanted to drive to end pay-to-play in Dutchess County, pushing for campaign finance reform on a local level. A hundred dollar limit on campaign contributions, some companies who get big county contracts. Poughkeepsie Journal, after Lucille and I started this in 99, did two editorials for this. Even the Republicans who control the Orange County Legislature, looks like they're about to pass a similar law. It's been in place in Rockland County for 15 years. So all this stuff we're talking about, Monday, September 30th, 5:30, Ryenbeck Town Hall, right across the way, they're all invited. There's a lot of things, there, I'm sorry, there, how do you say, there are a lot, there is a lot. There are many things that were on the agenda for the full board meeting for the county legislature last night. You can see this is our binder, it has all the stuff we talked about. Unfortunately, there were three things that really should have been on the agenda for the full board meeting last night, and actually last Wednesday's committee day. The campaign finance reform law that I've been talking about, that Lucille Patterson and I started to push on in 99, it's not even being allowed on the agenda for committee day. Even though the Rockland County Legislature passed this in 98, even though the Poughkeepsie Journal's editorialized for it, even though the Republicans who control, the Orange County Legislature are about to pass it. So I'm one person out of 25 in the county legislature. There are about 300,000 people in Dutchess County. If you folks want to end pay-to-play in Dutchess County, it's not every big contract is linked to a big donation, it's not. I'm not going to stand here and tell you, but I'm telling you more, it happens more often than you think. And it's a lot of the same companies involved. I'm the one person in Dutchess County who's been documenting the links between the fat county contracts and the large donations for the last 20 years. And in a lot of cases, it's the same folks. The Poughkeepsie Journal and the Daily Freeman have done editorials about the well testing legislation, like Rockland and Westchester, and the neighbor notification test site applications. Seventy-five percent of people in the area state have this. Ulster County, not even allowed onto the agenda for committee day. These are big, huge issues that in the past, we can talk about them, and we are not even allowed to bring it up, let alone the full board meeting in legislature. Not even allowed on the agenda for committee day. So I'm sort of a voice crying in the wilderness, or just relating to you what's going on on the 6th floor of 22 Market Street that's not particularly democracy. I know that this issue may come up on the 19th. I do not live in the village of Ryenbeck, okay? But I went to high school here. There are some folks in the room who I went to high school with. I'm just asking for the folks in this room to do what they can to make sure, I'm not trying to cut down all economic development, but the, just personally speaking, the 46 trees there at the hospital, I'm just asking for those to stay. And there seems to be some other properties right around there where those trees, I don't know why, they should be put on the chopping block, okay? There's got to be some solution where those trees don't have to be cut down. I just thought I'd make that pitch.
And, Joel, what I would say to that is you need to make those comments at the planning board level.
Okay. And why don't you guys are the movers and shakers? The other thing is, I would never try to step on your toes as a mayor, because I know you've been dealing quite a bit over the last few months with the 47 West Market Street property. My intention with trying to get a resolution passed, you know, to try to get Ken Glad here, the Dutchess County Commissioner of Mental Hygiene, is because I just don't want to be accused of looking the other way. I mean, I raised a ruckus when they tried to privatize that, you know, to try to warn people. And then sort of, nobody likes somebody who stands before you and says, "I told you so, but I told you so." I mean, I knew it was going to be a chamber of horrors. Because, you know, there's a real lack of accountability, as everybody in this room knows, when the county pulled out. There's no more county white vans, you know, bringing people there. There's the pros model, which is different with what they had before, and they did not really come to the community and work with you guys. So I just wanted to let you know that. I'm at 876-2488, 4532105. Thank you, I got to run to Clinton Town Hall and for their town board meeting, thank you.
Thanks, Joel. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion about 47 West Market Street. Just so everybody's aware, currently the village of Ryenbeck does not have a zoning enforcement officer. Mr. Finell submitted his resignation, and we have posted the position, and have received applications, the deadline for submission was today. So Joel will now have to go through a process of screening those applications and interviewing candidates that hire the zoning enforcement officer. So basically, in the meantime, we have been working and consulting with Mr. Finell to find out legally what we are able to do and not able to do. Before Mr. Finell had resigned, he had sent a letter to the property owner, Mr. Kalnaghi, the owner of 47 West Market Street, with an order to cease and desist. We have since received a letter from Mr. Martin, who is Mr. Kalnaghi's attorney, and they have asked us to grant an extension while they can ascertain some more facts and then go through a zoning process. Basically, what Mr. Olson had advised me is they have a right to appeal Mr. Finell's decision. So at this point, we have to respond to them, let them know that that's what their right is to appeal the decision, and then we go forward from there. I don't believe anybody is of the mindset that people shouldn't have mental health care. The issue we face here as a village board is that the way that business is operating, it's operating on a site plan that doesn't belong to the people that are there. It belongs to the county. The county no longer is the lessee of the building. The attorney for Mr. Kalnaghi has maintained that they only have two tenants operating out of that facility. We know there's three organizations operating out of that facility. They all participated in meetings at Town Hall that Joel had posted. So there's definitely some questions that need to be answered yet. And it's my opinion that at this time, what we should do is grant them this extension and get the rest of the facts together. I have had discussions with Bill O'Neill, the deputy county executive, who is the liaison to the mental health department, and asked him what the relationship with the county was. And he clearly stated that they fund those organizations, they provide them with money. But the county no longer operates the facility. I had suggested that perhaps everybody needed to come together and have a meeting, but there has not been any outreach back to me to have that meeting. So at this point, I think we need to do what we should do, and I believe it's in the village's best interest to grant this extension temporarily and have them go through this zoning process that they should. And basically, as I see it, they need to appeal it. Appeal can be denied, they need to request a variance, and that's the only way they can really operate.
Well, it's an interpretation. There was an order issued by our zoning enforcement officer on August 1st. He said to cease and desist by the 1st of September. Under the code, they didn't have until October the 1st to appeal that decision. They have 60 days to appeal it. In essence, we could notify Mr. Martin, he should simply file his appeal in accordance with the code. And then he can go to the board, the zoning board, to make a decision based on the facts he wants to present.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? Please come to the microphone.
Hi, and thank you for all of this, really, we really.
Chris, say your name.
Oh, my name's Miranda Perry, I live on Oak Street. This, when you're talking about this extension they're asking for, is that an extension beyond the appeal date that they're asking for?
I think he was asking for an extension of the cease and desist, and still by law, he has the right until October the 1st to appeal. So I think we should just notify him to follow the code and file his appeal timely.
Fantastic, thank you.
Hi, I'm Woods. I manage 6422 and 6423 at Moncomery Street. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to go to the meeting that Joel had across the way. So I'm a little behind, I guess. What do they actually have to, they have to be, are they, they're in violation of their site plan?
They don't have a site plan.
So they would need site plan, and they would need a variance, a use variance, or?
No, the zoning enforcement officer has issued his determination that they are exceeding their non-conforming use. They have a right to appeal, and I think that's what we should leave it at this point, because it's now the zoning board to make that decision.
Okay, so they would have to go to the, is that the ZBA?
Mm-hmm. The zoning board, correct.
Okay. Have there been, I mean, I have heard through the grapevine that there have been, you know, issues and things like that with people. Can you go over a little bit more of just some of the issues that have been occurring? I mean, I've only heard kind of through the grapevine, I mean, I would, we haven't had any issues at our building. But I'm not always, obviously, my tenants don't always tell me every possible thing.
Well, there were some, there were some problems with some of the clients at the building wandering into people's yards, and there were some UPS packages that were opened up, and merchandise taken, and people blocking the sidewalks, and standing on the sidewalks and smoking, and some inappropriate language, etc.
Okay, okay.
Hi, I'm Kitty Ginn, live at 15 Oak Street. I'm the next door neighbor to 47 West Market Street. Maybe I can just elaborate a little bit on what your questions were. Just to give you a little, I know you were at the first mayor's forum, Joel Tyner's forum mayor, and you were at both of them, Mr. Sauer. But I'm just going to give you some information that we learned there that I found exceedingly disturbing. The clients are classified as having severe problems. They are mentally ill, and they are substance abusers. The employees that work there also stated that they are understaffed. So when Mr. Jeff Martin wrote in a letter that they currently have 11 employees, I see probably 20 or more employee cars parked there, and they still feel understaffed.
Mayor, if I could, I would really prefer that if we're going to go through the procedures with the zoning board, that we have all of it.
Then save all this for the?
The zoning board hearing.
Okay.
It'll be presented by the applicant, his appeal of the order, and everyone will get noticed, and it'll be a public hearing, and then the zoning board.
If I could just say one more thing to this board, then. This is a substantial safety risk. And I know we have to go through a legal process, but I feel like there's been numerous delays, time extensions given to Mr. Martin to even respond to the nine questions that were posed by the CEO back on May 16th. It's been four months since we saw you guys, May 14th, and we're still waiting. And you can move an ashtray can to the back by the gazebo, but this substantial safety risk exists. We are.
We are in a position where this board has no ruling on the code. The code is the code. They need to go through a zoning board process.
Okay.
And the zoning board will make the determination whether that facility can operate based on the facts that are presented by Mr. Martin and by you folks at a public hearing.
Right, you just need to understand how frustrated we are.
Believe me, you need to understand how frustrated we are.
It is so, if, I live right next door. I've never, ever, I've lived next door to a mental, mentally challenged adults for 29 years, 30 years now, and this is atrocious.
One thing I can tell you, six years in government, the most frustrating thing is how slowly we move.
It's very frustrating.
Because I'm a person that believes in making decisions, getting things done. Unfortunately, I don't have the power to just go ahead and say, "We're going to do this."
And I understand all that, I'm just, we are so very frustrated, all of us.
So are we. You know, the best thing that could have happened here was if the county had gotten everybody involved from the get-go, but that didn't happen.
My name is Kathleen Brazzi, I live at 18 Oak Street. And I just have a concern, well, I have a concern about this whole thing, but is there any way that they could be forced to hire a security guard to be in that parking lot? When those clients are not inside?
I can't answer that question.
I mean, my neighbor, Bill Wagler, who has lived on that street for close to 91 years, does not even want to go out on his scooter anymore and have to go by there, and that's a shame for that man who's lived on that street for that long and has never felt any fear. And now because of this situation, he doesn't even want to go past his driveway. And that's just a sad situation for someone who has lived here this long, served in World War II, and he's afraid to go beyond his driveway. And that's a shame, that really is a shame. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is just along with what the previous person said, and it's more just a question. Have you guys, you know, since this all kind of started, have, I know you can't do anything with zoning and everything, it has to go through the process, but have you somehow increased patrolling or?
Yes.
Or anything like that in that area, yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was done back in May. Anybody else?
Mike G, 15 Oak Street. I'm just concerned about this grantee of an extension. I really would like to know a firm date based upon our village code.
They're not granting an extension.
You're not granting an extension.
He has appealed by October 1st, which is 60 days from the date of Mr. Finell's order.
And then he has 62.
He has that time for appeal, zoning board of appeals. He must file his appeal by then, or we would then seek to enforce the order.
Okay. There's not a 62-day time period after October 1st?
No, there's a 60-day time period from the date of Mr. Finell's order in order to appeal that order.
And then it goes to the?
To the zoning board of appeals.
It goes to the planning board for advisory opinion, or right to the zoning?
To the zoning board of appeals for an interpretation.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for coming, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Department reports, wastewater, Brent?
For August, we had 4 million gallons of wastewater treated, 40,500, 10 gallons of sludge processed, 4,427 pounds of sludge processed. We'd like to welcome Bill Maniero to the facility. He started employment, 812-113. And I have to open, or I wanted to open sludge bids, and I've got bids to regenerate or replace it too. We posted for the sludge removal, sludge gate removal, and we got four responses. And I'm just going to open them here. This one is from Veolia Waters, our current sludge hauler.
This is always ripping, every year we do this.
Don't get any better than this. I'm not going to try to convert it from like five gallons, if it should look like I did the first year. Okay, this is $126.27 per wet ton on specification volume of approximately 340 wet tons per year, which is what was projected usage was. This one is from, ooh, Diamond Septic. Let's see, I don't see detachment, it says detached finer quote. Oh, here it is, sometime, $143 per ton of dry cake sludge. Seal bid from Spectre Serve.
Who is it?
From Spectre Serve. $143 a ton. Same as before, right?
Same as the one before.
Yeah. And then the last one is Earth Care. Earth Care, $135 per ton. So again, the lowest bid is, the lowest apparent bidder is Veolia Water. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Veolia, subject to department review. I would go over these with Nancy to make sure that.
You made a motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? So vote.
The other big thing is that we have antiquated and sometimes faulty emergency generator at the facility. And we have been putting money aside in our capital expenditure plan, and we budgeted for a replacement of this. So we've got three quotes to replace the generator. One of them, the lowest bid is from Gentec, $32,989.50. I don't know if I should read the other ones, because this is an RFP.
32 what?
32 what?
Do we?
It's under that public bid.
It's under $35,000, so it should be RFP. So I don't know if I should read the other ones, because it's an RFP instead of a public.
Is that the lowest bid?
Yeah.
That's the recommendation, to avoid, make a motion.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the Gentec proposal. They're new win from New Windsor. It's the Kohler 100 RE Oz JF generator. You're going to pull out the old one, dispose of it, and install a new one. It's a 100 kilowatt generator for $32,989.50.
Is there a second? Second, discussion?
So if the power goes out, this will operate the whole wastewater?
Uh, it does, yeah, not the green, not the ultraviolet, but most of the plant.
Is it run on propane?
No, it's on diesel.
Just questions?
Or diesel, which is the same thing.
Just said, put a new tank in there, right, house the young tank?
Yeah.
So how long is it going to last?
I don't know, because we got.
You mean the life expectancy of the?
No, 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 the thousand calories.
Well, that was the whole idea, was to deep up the capacity in case we have power issues. We went from 500 gallons to 600, 2,000, I just don't recall.
Several days. Typically, the power's back on within 24 hours.
So it's budgeted, this is pretty much the tail end of our capital expenditure plan to put together after this. I'd like to look at my figures and see, our figures, and see if we would be entitled to a rate reduction, but that's down a little bit.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So vote. Anything else, Brent?
Oh, I wanted to tell Howie that we would not have a 1.5 cubic foot dumpster there. We prefer weekly, which I think the street department knows about that. Because we're giving bids for wastewater.
There's one there already?
Yeah, but we're going to, what we thought was we'd give it to the highway department, because we own it, the container, and just give the container to the highway department. They need it for anything.
And what are they going to do with their trash?
Well, well, waste comes, or whoever our vendor is, comes in and disposes of it.
I'm confused now. You said there's a 1.5 cubic foot one added to the wastewater.
That's just our usage requirements, but we own that container. I guess we're entertaining the idea of waste management coming in and doing our container for us.
Right, well, the thing is now, the garbage truck, now current, our garbage truck, which we're going to mention to be getting rid of, currently picks up your waste. And it also does adhere, this is for the fire department for this building. We have a one yard container for the fire for this building here on the side of here. So, I was going to talk about this during the highway.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know.
All right, I want to talk about it later.
Okay, coming up.
Okay, that's it, Brent?
That's it.
All right, Heinz Ward?
We treated 40,930,000 gallons this month, which is just about 500,000 gallons we lost. The painting of the pipe gallery is just about completed. We have about another day, day and a half or so, we're going to go down there. It looks really, really nice. One of the things I found out in the last two weeks was that we have a door in the back of the, of the building, which has been leaking water for years and years and years. And I was always wondering why we had water sitting down in the pump area. And this time, we had quite a downpour at night, and I came in in the morning to look at it, and I saw the water flipping down, actually almost into the 100 horsepower pumps there. So to make things short, I went out and got some bits to replace the door and the frame. The frame is totally corroded, has been corroded for four or five years, and the water's just coming in there. In addition to that, we have to do some grading, which the highway department, the street department is going to be doing, and we have to put a small retaining wall on the side of the, where the door opens, which I probably can do.
Make a motion.
So I want to, I want to purchase a replacement door and a frame for the, for about $1,888.14. I had bits, this is the lowest bid, the highest bid is $3,600. I asked seven people.
Okay, we got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So vote. Good.
We, well, distribution system, we replaced one of the 19th century vintage hydrants on Huntington and Violet Place. We replaced the 24 inch section of a 12 inch water main on River Road.
24 foot?
Which is a 24, 24 foot section of a 12 inch main. We lost about 500,000 gallons or more, probably somewhat more than that. We have an action plan to mitigate a lot of the pulsing that happens when you turn on pumps and so on, to get a more smooth working operation. We changed, actually, the last unmeted account in this village to a meted account. We added 18 new water accounts, 17 from the garden salon. On the 23rd or the 24th, we are going to do some major work on Route 9 and in the section of Route 9 and Chestnut Street to replace a number of water valves that are broken. We need to replace that, because we cannot shut them off. And we have, we want to replace some of the hydrants and do, do other work. And we need to do that, we need to get control of our distribution system. We hired a water department plant operator, Traneen, and he's going to start this Friday. I may as well talk about the electric power reconstruction, it just takes a second here. In August, we consumed about $3,600. Uh, in August, we consumed about thirty-six, uh, thirty-six hundred fifty-eight kilowatt hours and we generated thirty-one fifteen kilowatt hours, saving about four hundred ninety-eight dollars in, in the process using solar, our solar panels. Uh, Central Hudson informed me that they exchanged about twenty percent of the hydrogen, uh, uh, high pressure hydrogen vapor lamps and with sodium lamps. And I was told that there's gonna be substantial amount, substantial amount being replaced in this coming month. So that is for today, for the section.
Okay. Thank you. Fire department.
Okay, I'll start with the call volumes for August. Um, for EMS, we have nineteen in the town, nineteen in the village, for a total of thirty-eight. Uh, fire calls were nine in the town, ten in the village, uh, total of nineteen. Motor vehicle accidents, we had six in the town, two in the village, and a total of eight. Uh, total of calls for the town were thirty-four, the village thirty-one, and a grand total of sixty-five. Uh, year to date, uh, January, from January one, we got two hundred and ninety-two calls in the town, two forty in the village. Um, and that doesn't add up, but five fifty-one, uh, grand total. That's it for the call report. Other items, I know there's a question about our bandwidth use. Um, there was a new restriction on January first of this year and I'm told that we are fully compliant with that. We're working on, uh, two grants right now. The one would be the closure of the FEMA grant from two thousand thirteen. Um, I think the, the amount approved will be sufficient, but we're still waiting on the final feedback from FEMA on that to close it out. Grant's been closed.
Two thousand thirteen or two thousand three?
Two thousand three, sorry. So, so that one's pending closure, just waiting on the final, uh, final amount. And then, uh, two thousand thirteen grant actually may be for two thousand fourteen, but they're working on it right now. Putting together a package that, uh, the window isn't open yet, but trying to get to the point, so when it does open, they'll be ready to, ready to go. Uh, in addition to that, uh, working on, you know, analyzing the budget as it applies to the town budget, uh, to make sure that we, um, or we renegotiate that contract for the upcoming year, that we'll be, be at the speed on that. Um, one last thing is we're looking at, uh, potentially a fleet management review. There's kind of a, a consulting agency that will review the fleet and tell you what, you know, you should have based on the population, um, that we have here and geography. And they put together a plan, you know, a replacement plan over the course of years. So as opposed to it being, you know, I like the yellow truck, they will have some, um, some hard data to look at. There's also a second, uh, second phase to that, which looks at the ISO ratings, which establish the insurance premiums for all the, um, properties in the village and then also the district as it pushes out to the town. So those are two proposals that they have, but I asked them to get a, uh, you know, a second or hopefully a third, uh, proposal. Seems there may be limited agencies that provide that kind of service, but, uh, we'll bring that forward, uh, next time hopefully. That's about all I have.
All right, thanks.
Do you have every card?
Which report?
The list of what you called.
Yes.
Uh, the second chief's car, fifty-nine two.
Yes.
We should, we should, we put it out the bid, only got one phone call on it, the person never even came and looked at it, made out. Uh, so I think we should just dispose it for scrap.
Well.
Or if anybody has any other ideas or knows somebody that might be interested in it.
I happened to stop by here last night to talk to the fire department about something else and, and they said, um, I think it was Bill Vickery told me he has somebody who's interested in it, it's another fire department up north near Syracuse.
John McGuire had reached out.
I think it's John McGuire, so I'm talking to both of those guys.
Yeah, but they're aware of the issues, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, you gonna follow up with them?
Yeah.
Cause it's just sitting there. It's got a flat tire now. The battery's dead.
So we don't have to put out the bid at all again, right? We just consolidate that point for them?
As long as you give fair value for it.
Yeah, okay. Well, this market value is the only person interested.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it's too out on the market.
Yeah.
It's not high command for, for that particular piece of equipment, I guess. Okay. Talk to John then.
Yeah.
All right, street department, Howie?
Yeah, um, tree trimming around the stop signs and the road sides have been going on all month. Uh, Mike Wolf, uh, suggests that when planting new trees near the intersections, uh, we should consider a thirty-foot buffer zone for sight distance. Um, and I told him I would mention that to the tree committee since we're the ones that would be planting the trees in the, in the right ways. Um, they have been painting the curbs, weather permitting. Um, they have been rebuilding a leaf vacuum housing and it's about twenty years old and they've been having problems getting parts due to the fact that a company called Giant Back is out of business. Um, but they're still working on it and at this time, each having the metal fabricated, fabricated for the leaf chute. And they will have the backhoe service for the fall leaf pickup. They will be servicing them this month. Uh, the catch basin repairs moving along, road repair and blacktop is underway. And we had the successful paving on the South Parsonage Street, as everybody knows, for four days, three days.
I, I have a question on that. Are we going to put a safety stripe on that?
Got some more discussion.
I like, I like it the way it is.
I got some, I got some comment.
I'm not a safety person, so.
I got some comment from Joe Phelan. He said he's been getting some inquiries from parents of schoolchildren and they're wondering if we were gonna put a, a white stripe, especially in, in the mini park area, there used to be a white stripe there, uh, for like the pedestrian side. And if we're gonna put a crosswalk stripe across from, uh, basically where, uh, the liquor store is over to Main Park.
So those crosswalks, you just paint and we don't have the full blown crosswalk with the, you know, with the little fluorescent?
Well, we did the crosswalks on Oldwood. We can just paint the lines across.
But they can be dangerous in a, in a busy area, right?
Well, there's a stop sign right there. So it's a logical location to have a crosswalk because the vehicles have to stop anyway, you know?
That's true.
And some people are suggesting we have one of the crosswalk going from the sidewalk that comes out of the mini park, uh, then going across South Parsonage Street.
Well, it's in the middle of the block and I'm not in favor of that. It's only gonna slow traffic down, especially in the mornings, when there's a high volume of traffic. They have to stop at the stop sign, so with the pedestrian.
Yeah, I don't want to give the kids a false sense of security.
Yeah, but I think the white line needs to be there because there's a lot of pedestrian traffic on the side.
Typically, you know, it's streets, we don't paint center lines or, uh, shoulder lines, but there was a shoulder line on that side because it's such a wide pedestrian lane. So.
I can tell you from walking there, it feels like there needs to be the white line to.
Well, can we do the pedestrian line then and then not hit the center line?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do it a little more.
Actually, I feel uncomfortable driving there without knowing where this other line is. So there's a lot of trucks parked there sometimes and, uh, I, at least maybe a dotted line or something like that coming down. There's also a lot of school buses driving there every day.
Yeah, I think we're gonna open a can of worms because then we're gonna be subject to everybody who lives on the street wanting the center line.
Well, no, but I, I, I wonder if we leave ourselves open to lawsuits or something where happens on the school bus there.
I mean, there's plenty of fairly busy roads that don't have that stripe. A burger doesn't have stripe in town.
Why would you not want a stripe there, Brian?
Uh, in this, I don't know, again, I'm not a safety person, but I don't know that the center one really has any safety.
Yeah, that's the way I feel. I don't know if, has there been studies?
I like, now that Keith mentioned it, pedestrian one, now that could be attractive because people can.
The question, the question I will pose, why South Parsonage Street and not every street? That's the question I would pose.
Right. Why not South Street?
There's sidewalks.
Well, would your, I like your pedestrian.
Yeah.
But I mean, the center one, but.
What's board's desire? Pedestrian line and a crosswalk? Yes. Need a motion to approve that, Rich?
Um, if you're gonna be, uh.
Are we, do our guys do this?
Yeah, I think our guys will do it. You just, you didn't want on Oldwood, right?
To the budget.
Right. What's that?
Said it's within your budget.
Okay. All right.
So within our budget?
I'll, I'll send Joe Phelan an email that it's gonna be taken care of.
Uh, I'm just still, I don't know if we're gonna discuss, I'm still concerned about the, the sidewalk comes out of the, uh, mini park. Cause a lot of the kids use that, I go by there every, when they're going to school, I go by there. A lot of kids use that to go, go there, I mean, there's not gonna be any crosswalk.
And it never has been.
No, I know there never has been, but putting the crosswalk up by the, they don't walk up to the, to the intersection to go there, to the school.
Cause there's a path to the mini park.
If, yeah, if they're coming from this way.
The side, the sidewalk there is not for the kids who are going through the mini park. The sidewalk, the, the, the violent play, the, the crosswalk or, uh, growl is for the, that, that side of the street. It's not meant to direct all the kids that are going up towards the valley. They have the option of going down to the crosswalk if they want. You know, we could put a crosswalk anywhere on that street, doesn't mean you're gonna use it. Look what happens down here. This one, you gotta crosswalk and you see somebody six feet away from you walking in the middle of the road. Yeah? Can't legislate and tell them, Howie.
I know, so you're saying we're gonna put a crosswalk up by the intersection where the stop signs? And then they're gonna walk on one side of the road, that's, that's called.
What I can do is I'll reach out to Joe and I'll say, where do you want the crosswalk? Okay. Okay?
Where do we want the pedestrian lane?
Well, the pedestrian lane would be on the west side of the road.
West side?
On the, uh, the liquor store side.
Okay.
Well, then, then, doesn't there used to be a line on both sides?
No.
I don't know.
Because usually cars parked for the mini park on the other side.
But that's, so then they're gonna have to cross if they're going up to high school and you put in the intersection, that's gonna encourage them to walk all the way up to the park versus that path through the, through the mini park.
Well, that path to the mini park is actually a path to the mini park, so maybe we should.
I mean, that's safer than walking over.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Well, the other thing is there is a cross, uh, coming out of the mini park on the other side by the school, there's a crosswalk.
That's right.
So they're encouraged to go, to go on that.
Okay.
Walkway through the mini park.
That's true. I'll reach out to Joe. Anything else in streets?
Um, as we just said, the high reflective stop lines have been installed at the intersections on South Parsonage Street and the big bellies, uh, Mike has noticed are being filled with household garbage. Um, uh, I just wanna mention that the board here, we approved at a special meeting a couple weeks ago, the purchase of a skid steer. And with this skid steer, we're gonna get three attachments, a stump grinder, a miller, milling, uh.
Builder.
Pavement miller and a groom. And with the stump grinder, we're gonna start, uh, grinding some of the stumps we have. We have about forty of them throughout the village. So that's gonna save us money and, as the guys are gonna be doing it themselves. And, uh, with the miller, what's that thing called?
Well, it's a plane, technically it's called a planer.
Planer. We'll be able to use that. Right, currently we hire out to, to, uh, to have somebody else do that for us, to fix the potholes and, or pavement areas. So we can do that in-house now also. Um, and one other thing I'd like to mention, uh, another one of the projects I didn't, like, we talked about the highway department doing it to clean the outside of this building because they are in charge of maintenance of the building, the highway department is. And as I said before, uh, before I went, I came here last night to talk to the fire department because I know they're here on Monday nights, um, talk about them letting us use their ladder truck to go, um, spray the side of the building. Uh, they agreed to do it. Uh, Bill Vickery agreed to, to man the, uh, the ladder truck if we so desire. Um, had no cost to us. Otherwise, Mike had just, Mike had got a, uh, quote from a lift, a man lift for the firehouse. It's three hundred and seventy-five dollars per day and a pickup and delivery charge of a hundred and fifty dollars.
But the only thing I would suggest is that we need to determine what, what we're gonna use to clean it.
Right.
All right? And then we need to consider whether that could do any harm to the fire apparatus. Okay. I mean, if we can have the fire company, if we use the truck, it's gonna save us money.
Well, Bill just, today, Bill just was sleeping and said, told Mike, when he's ready to do those stuff.
Yeah, he's a devil all day, so he's willing to do it.
So we need to find out, we need to use, what we need to use on that, those lentils, the stone work, that, uh, is all black. We're gonna clean that up.
Okay.
And then find out whether it's gonna be safe to have that fallen, you know, sprayed or whatever onto the fire.
Okay.
Okay.
Howie, did you wanna talk about this waste?
Oh, yeah, the other thing is, as we were briefly mentioning before, um, now that we're out of the garbage business, we have to think of, uh, what we're gonna do with the wood deck garbage that we, we generated at our buildings, the village hall, the water, the sewer department and the highway department. Now, Mike had gotten, um, quotes, everybody has it.
Right.
Uh, from Welsh sanitation, which actually is a state bid. And as Brad had said, currently the water treatment plant, the wastewater plant has a, um, one point five, right? Yard. And you're sufficient with that? You're happy with that?
Yeah. We, uh, weekly, yeah.
We have the same thing.
You have the same thing at the water department.
That's right, man, that's right.
Apparently we all knows. We, everybody, we all knows, right? So.
Why can't we use our own containers to do that?
Probably will, I don't know if we're gonna get.
I always says, says Welchron, actually.
Oh, yours says Welchron?
Has anybody asked them?
No, we just, we just.
Just empty our containers?
We just got these bids for, uh, the whole service and I didn't realize that we owned these containers already.
What did you find out?
Maybe they'll just give us a credit for them, they can take it back.
Ask the question.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we can make approval.
Yeah, well, the point is we have two bids. Um, and, and if you look at it, uh, compare the, the other company here, I'm not gonna say the name, has lowest, um, thing is a two, two yarder, two FL means two yarder.
We're not comparing apples to apples here.
Why not?
Cause you got two yard dumpsters on this one and here they're one and a half, there's one two yard there and there's a four yard, there's a four yard here and a four yard there.
Okay, but this, this company does not have anything lower than, than two yard, so we'd have to use it.
Yeah, the rates are different.
Well, then you can compare the two yarder here to this two yarder, which is, this one's less than this one.
But we only need one point.
Clearly this is, clearly this is cheap.
Yeah, that's the point I'm trying to make here. So I make a motion that we, um.
What I would suggest is that you talk and see if they can, if there's any change in the price if we have our own container.
Okay.
Or they may say, well, you know, we'll give you a credit for that container and we'll put our container in place. I don't know.
Ask both companies?
No, I would just, I'd go to Welsh.
Okay.
So the amount of the series, we, we, yeah, big, hard to make, right?
No, cause we still, we still have our garbage truck to give it at least.
Okay?
Okay.
Is that it?
Well, yeah.
When we're on that, while we're on that, what are we gonna do with the three trucks? Do we decide?
We haven't decided what we're gonna do with those two trucks, the garbage truck and the recycling truck.
Well, I mean, that's for further discussion once we resolve this.
Okay.
Containment business for the moon time. For the moon time, well, I mean, the recycling truck, we could have spoken, right?
Yeah.
So.
Do I agree with now that they're not bid?
You wanna talk to Mike about?
Yeah, let me talk to Mike.
He's gonna find some use for it, probably.
No, he's not. No, he's not. Um, I, I, we have one bid here for, uh, I know this is on a tree, but this is also highway department, Mike got these bids from the trees. Does everybody have this one bid? We're still waiting for a couple more, so we, I'm not gonna take any action on this now. Okay, just to let you know. That's it for the highway.
Okay. Planning and zoning. Frank, you got anything?
Uh, no, we're just, we're gonna talk to Frank Swatton, aren't I, about, um, the vacancy.
Okay.
On the Z B A.
We do have a meeting tomorrow night in Fairbanks.
Yeah.
Uh, try and finalize the zoning draft. My question is, do we wanna set a date for a public hearing?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we do, right?
For October?
Do we have a final draft?
Yeah, yeah.
Really, I don't wait for the final draft.
Okay.
And then, Rich, you haven't reviewed these two documents yet, have you, these two proposed codes?
The events code, I've got some modifications that we're gonna send you this week.
Okay.
Some proposals to see if.
And then what about the zoning district language, have you even seen it yet?
The Fairgrounds language?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, we can comment on that?
No, you don't get to say anything.
With the events code?
No, I don't get to say anything to the Fairgrounds, I'm just circulating, then you can.
Okay.
You get to say whatever you want, how you just can't.
Uh, the.
I can put on the events code.
Cause we know you're conflicted.
Will we be able to, um, have a public hearing this year, you know, this?
All right, also, I wanna have a public hearing in October, if you can.
Yeah, I'll have the conversations with, and when you have a final draft, if it wants a public hearing.
Okay. Forty-seven West Market Street, we talked about. So, we've been on planning and zoning a little bit. Everybody's got the, uh, applications for the zoning enforcement position? Yeah. Okay, all right, so everybody needs to go through those, pick out logical candidates, and then we're gonna have to schedule a, uh, interviews. Okay?
Do you want somebody to do that, recommend two or three candidates?
Well, I think if we go through them, clearly, there's only about three people that stand up. And I think we're all gonna be in a big, big interview on that. Okay? And speaking of Francois, here he comes. Good evening, sir.
He's back.
We're talking about planning and zoning, did you come to talk to us?
He's, he's an alternate already, isn't he?
I resigned.
What's that?
He resigned.
Did he?
Yeah, pretty sure he'll.
I didn't think he had resigned. Okay.
Okay, so I, okay, good.
Okay.
So make a motion, thanks a lot.
And I, we'll see you tomorrow night, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Francois.
So Francois's indicating, um, if, if we should, uh, well, we'd like to appoint Ward Stanley to the, uh, zoning board of appeals.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ward Stanley, we do the zoning board of appeals, he's experienced and has done, and resigned before for health reasons, but he's feeling strong enough to come back and do it.
Is there any, a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Police in court. Everybody has the incident reports. Any questions? Relatively calm week, fair week, wasn't a whole lot of problems, you know, the usual, my friend or better here and there. Pretty good week. Dog report. Four of the month of July. There were some stray dogs running around, uh, no charges were made. Also, some barking dogs recorded, but nobody pressed charges. Roger says that the hot weather and open windows made people a little cranky. The village has been very busy lately, and I haven't seen a lot of violations, people haven't been good about using the bags, we have around the village also. Committee reports, trees, how?
Okay. Um, at our tree meeting last week, tree commission meeting, we, uh, have a few requests for trees to be removed here, we have, uh, at forty-one Mill Street, the Platte residence. Uh, the commission recommends that the village board approve the removal of the trees as soon as possible. There's one on One Orchard Street, we, we still have to determine if that's in the right of way. Cause it's on the corner, we're trying to figure out, maybe you can help me, Jim. Go there with me tomorrow, if you have time.
What time?
Whenever you can.
I'm very busy. How about Fri- uh, Friday morning, you gotta go to Poughkeepsie?
Thirty, yeah.
What time do you have to leave to go to Poughkeepsie Friday morning?
Be there at nine.
Let's talk about it.
Okay, we'll talk. There's some questions as whether this is in the right of way. But the board recommends that we do take it down if it is in the right of way.
And which one is that?
This is on One Orchard Street, it's.
Closer?
Yes. The intersection, we have to measure from the intersection.
Okay.
Uh, the board recommends that we, that, um, the pruning can be done at twenty-one South Street by S and S. And then there's also some other dead trees that, that I already given Mike, um, the list of them throughout the village. And yet, those are the ones he's getting, uh, estimates on taking down.
All right, you got my email about that public hearing, right? Check your e- email, cause I got the, I got these reports you sent over the weekend, and I looked at them yesterday. They have, this is actually a mistake in here. They have a public hearing on the hospital, a public hearing held on Tuesday, nine seventeen. Tuesday, nine seventeen is the public hearing for the Thompson Mazzaro Park.
Okay.
All right, on the nineteenth is the Z B A for the hospital.
Okay.
Public hearing. I sent an email out so that all the people on the tree commission were aware.
Okay, I didn't.
I didn't want them to show up here on the seventeenth.
Right.
About the hospital, it's not even, it's not on your agenda.
Right.
Only thing on the seventeenth is the, uh, Thompson Mazzaro Park.
Right, okay.
Okay.
And I wanna commend you to include and to cut another, trimming all the trees, and it's Carolina and Trumper and Squintini.
Oh, yeah.
Nice job there.
Yeah.
Thank you, and they, they've been trimming, they've been doing a lot of trimming on, uh, Route nine here too. From Aster Drive down, there was, somebody sent us an email. I mean, Aster Drive along the, um, street down to Route nine, yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, no, so that we, I make a motion that we accept the, uh, takedowns as, as mentioned. Mainly, there's only one here.
That's the one on Platte?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
It's on forty-one Mill Street, the person's name is Platte.
Oh.
Yeah, confused me.
Yeah.
I saw Platte.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted.
Oh, one more thing with the tree commission, Bill.
That's it.
You want me to say this is another business then, I'm waiting for other business? We're having, we're having our annual floor planting on November second, everybody's welcome, Saturday morning, nine o'clock. We will be meeting at, um, on Mulberry Street, I don't have the address right here, but we'll let you know next month.
Okay.
And also, this, this weekend at the farmer's market, uh, we'll have a little, little booth there just, uh, telling people what we do for the, on the tree commission, so please come and join us. That's it.
Okay. Website, anybody got anything? Financing controls?
I'd just like to say, Elise and I talked about cash handling practices. And I thought I would go to the department heads first before I say what our ideas were, like, talk to Mike and talk to, to Tom, and see if, you know, as a courtesy, just to see if some of these things would be okay, appropriate to them, which I assume that.
Okay.
So I'll just report back to you.
All right, sounds good. Uh, energy consumption and savings. You already did that, right?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, you jumped out of business, you went over everything.
That's energy consumption and saving, you know, the business. That's where we're at.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. So I have here, this is, uh, we have to adopt a resolution, and this resolution basically says that the village of Rhinebeck is going to authorize, Marcellan Sterling, for the reason to be the administrator of the.
C P H P.
C P H P, to be the administrator of the H R A for the employees. I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
That's just a formality, we're already using them?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's just giving them the, we have the H R A account set up, they've got the information, so anytime that the member goes in and uses their card for the H R A, they are given the option, they go in, they get the money, so it's C P H P. Asking for that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Okay, does anybody have any other business?
We, we've been approached by A T and T Wireless for yet another lease money for our generator and put it on a generator pad, so there would be additional lease space of eight feet by twelve feet out there. And it would be a gen rack, generator, um, I got the, uh, spec sheets on it. And the only concern, well, you and I have talked about this before, there might be generator fatigue around here, because when you run out of power, there's.
It'll be free.
Yeah, and it's kind of, so I don't know if there's, I can research this and see how quiet they are, but.
They don't want you to use the building to put an interior?
They can't, they can't use the shelter. You know, unless we could say, if we gave them shelter just for the generator and said, yeah.
How much money they offer us?
Three hundred and seventy-three bucks.
Three seventy-two and one?
Yeah, but we'd just split it with Crown Castle.
Do they have a generator now?
They have some kind of generator.
They've got a battery backup.
Battery, battery backup, yeah, I mean, that's what I meant. This might get post Sandy, you know, takes for our portfolio, and they're worried about.
Is there any way they can use, come up with the generators we have here?
They're all on U R.
No. We can charge them.
How big is the generator, so? You use an eight by twelve ton?
Yeah, see, it actually sits on top of the fuel tank and.
Oh.
Fifty kilowatt.
So it's a lot of clearance.
Yeah, it's kinda tall. It's in the cabinet, it's like.
You wanna research it a little more, right?
Yeah, I'll research it a little more.
All right.
Unless you guys are willing to, you know. I'll research it a little more.
Okay. Any other business?
Well, nice to see you.
That's correspondence.
The D A R resolution, that's where.
That's, that comes, that comes under correspondence.
San Antonio.
Yep. No other business?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to correspondence. Okay, uh, we had received a, uh, letter August eighth, and it was from Ruth Moore, executive director of Cornell Cooperative Extension. And they're asking us, kinda like a ceremonial resolution, I guess. Basically, it says on behalf of, and it would be us signing writing this letter to indicate our strong support of the proposal being submitted by Cornell Cooperative Extension, Dutchess County in partnership with County of Dutchess and other partners to develop a comprehensive sustainability plan to address organics diversion, waste reduction, energy savings, and develop a feasibility study for municipal anaerobic digestion in the county through the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, cleaner, cleaner communities program phase two. Implementation grants category two for the consolidated funding application. So they're looking for us to, uh, endorse this resolution. It's the board's pleasure.
I think this was brought up by Jeff from Miles, is the same thing?
Jeff sent it to us.
Yeah, okay. I agree with everything it says here, but I don't know if they're really asking for us to participate.
No, they're not asking us, they're asking us to pass a resolution, basically, that we endorse what they're doing. They're not asking us to do anything, you know, they're gonna endorse it.
Okay, I'm down the line, maybe they'll be asking us for specific, uh, participation, because there's some kind of a biomass, uh, project that this goes along with.
Right. It calls for an increase in organics.
All this letter is, is the village of Rhinebeck strongly supporting this idea. Doesn't command, doesn't command us to do anything.
It's asking us to write a letter?
Yeah, basically, this is the letter.
This is the letter, we put our name here.
We fill in the blanks. What's the board's plea? If you want a table, we can table it. You can think about it some more.
Uh, did you speak to Ruth Moore?
No.
Should we talk to her?
I don't know why, basically, they're asking us to support this idea.
I'll go along with it if you guys are.
If you want, if you wanna talk to her.
I support the idea.
We can find, comply with some of these ideas somewhere, you know, are we gonna give up our, our mulch for the biomass, you know, probably not, you know what I mean, it's, depends on what they're gonna ask of us, I guess. Are we gonna give up?
You wanna, let me talk to her.
Yeah.
Okay, next one is from the Daughters of the American Revolution. Dear village of Rhinebeck, Mayor Rehm, General Richard Montgomery, dear house with a wedding gift from Judge Henry Beekman, Rhinebeck's patetique, to his granddaughter Janet Livingston, on the occasion of her marriage to General Richard Montgomery, it is the oldest house in the village of Rhinebeck, a condition of being on the national records of historic places. It also is listed as a site of the New York State Revolutionary War Heritage Trail. They are asking us to proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, as Constitution Week. What's the board's pleasure?
Absolutely.
Can somebody make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, declare September seventeenth through twenty-third as being Constitution Week in the village of Rhinebeck, I say.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Uh, received August sixteenth, request from Senate Claus to use this room for their annual, uh, children's workshop. They've done this over the years.
I make a motion, we allow Senate Claus to use this room?
Senate motion.
What we need to do, and this is something I can express to them, is the same parameters that we've had in the past, that they're responsible for the cleanup of the room, leaving it in foundation. Okay? So, can we have a motion?
Yes.
I second.
I seconded it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Uh, we had gotten a letter from, this was actually out of Freeman, I don't know if everybody had seen it, but it was, uh, Controller Denapoli was uh, announcing that we can expect in two thousand fourteen and fifteen to see a lowering of the employer contributions in the pension system, which is good news. However, the bad news is that next year we're facing a one point six six tax cap, because it's tied to inflation. So we won't be operating at two percent next year, we'll be operating at one point six six tax cap. So. That's bad news. Uh, had received a letter from, uh, John McDonald, John is, uh, former president of Nikon, and he served as the city, uh, city, uh, host mayor. And he is, uh, asking us to support an effort that has been very important to him over the past several years. It's centered around character education with a focus on the month of October, which is anti bullying month. Schools and communities are recognizing the month of October as anti bullying awareness month, and as co-chair of the Academy for Character Education at Sage Colleges. I am asking for your assistance in getting the message out, our mission is to spread awareness of the pressures every student feels when it comes to bullying, and its impact on our children, our schools, and our communities. I am asking that your respective city or village adopt a resolution, a proclamation, recognizing the month of October as anti bullying awareness month, a sample resolution is attached to the community. It's the board's pleasure. a sample resolution is attached to the community, it's the board's pleasure.
Speaker. I'm for the...
Yeah, right, yeah.
May it wasn't to, uh, recognize October and not 2013 as anti-bullying awareness month?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. I didn't make the spot a little bit smaller than that. See, microscope, I'm going to read it. Okay, and we have received on September 6th, I believe it was, it's kind of blurry. Uh, this is from the Department, New York State Department of Public Service. They want us to help them in raising awareness of the Lifeline Discount Telephone Service program and encouraging eligible consumers to enroll. Lifeline Discount Telephone Service is a program designed to make basic telephone service more affordable for income-eligible consumers. So that's just to bring to people's attention, and the information will be available downstairs when we see. Anybody have any other correspondence?
Uh, as far as the Santa Claus scheme that we're giving to us, are we going to look at this later?
We're not going to take any action on that yet, simply because I haven't had a meeting with them to discuss what they have proposed in there, and since their proposals are over and above what we've done in the past, so I need to have a discussion with them. I did see an email coming from Pat Sexton today suggesting a meeting maybe next week, uh, so I have to respond to that.
Okay.
So we can act on it next month.
Okay.
Heinz, water and sewer adjustments.
Okay, we remounted some of the water and sewer adjustments, made it more readable. As far as the water adjustments concerned, we had 13 new owners, who paid 25 each. We had tapping fees, 18 of them, 17 from the gardens, from months before. We had end of final bills, 15 of them, that's, final bills is somebody sells the house and, uh, and settles the water bills, or the sewer bills for that matter. Uh, there are a couple of adjustments, one of them with the central school system, I had meetings with them, and we told them that we will not be able to adjust them anymore in the future, that they have to get the, uh... We promised to get the bills in on time, which they usually get, and they promised a bill process, and so we don't have these adjustments anymore. So this is the last one, unfortunately, it has been inverted here, so it's a $600, $660 bill, and the adjustment was, uh, uh, $66, yeah, and the difference, actually, what gets built is $600. So... Uh, we had one, uh, in past months, we had a lot of problems with, uh, when we changed meters and so on, we had, where we get, uh, problems with the software, we had fixed this, but this is one remaining one here, where we have, uh, got the wrong reading, and we had to make a $90 adjustments on that, and, but the problem has been corrected at this point. Uh, the last one is a, the payment was applied to the wrong account, was, instead, was, the payment was applied to the sewer account instead of the water account. So I made a motion to accept the water adjustments as described in this, and the sewer adjustment, is it right that's right?
Yeah, mine are a little different, but, should I just describe mine too? Go ahead. My tapping fees are, and some of my final bills would jive with his, but, so for numbers, uh, 4010, account numbers 40103S through 40117S, seven, including account 549S, a $750 tapping fee. Four of those also have final bills. And then I have a final bill for 21328S for $22.40. And then I got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 new owners, accounts numbers 40099S, 40108S, 40025S, 21364S, 40112S, 21328S, 40107S, 21187S, and 40102S, 40094S, and 40025S.
Do we have to enumerate all of these?
I don't know. No, okay, not necessary, all you have to do is, we're doing adjustments, so all you have to do is the adjustments. You don't have to mention anything about new owners, you don't have to do tapping fees, that type of stuff. So you need to, you need to, you made a motion on your water, alright? And then we'll have to have the sewer adjustment included in that, so we need to make a motion on that.
So I'd like to make a motion to include the sewer adjustments in that.
Okay.
Make a motion to the board?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the water and sewer adjustment. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted.
I have one, uh, item that I want to discuss about adjustments here. In the 28th of May, minutes which we have not agreed, uh, there is a sentencing that says adjustments should be done after the board approved and not before. The policy needs to be updated now. The reporting is accurate of that, I believe, you made that point. Uh, what is going to be a difficult thing to do is to actually do this, because...
Okay, I'll give you the answer to it, okay? The board needs to approve the adjustments. You can authorize the adjustments, but the board has to approve them, and what hasn't been happening in the past, the control office was here, was there was no, the adjustments were being made and no trustee was approving them, and some of them didn't make it to the board level to be approved either, okay? So you can authorize Pat to go ahead and do them, but we got to make sure that everyone that's adjusted has your approval, you need to sign off on it. And then, it needs to come to the board and be approved also.
Because, because we can, the village goes out almost six months, six weeks ago, we agreed with them.
Yep. And that's, when they, when they submit their report, their final analysis to us, that's going to be... Okay. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I wanted to just, yeah, are we double Heinz, right?
What do you got?
I got this email that we all got.
That's other business.
So we have the next month?
What are you doing? We're talking about water and sewer adjustments.
He said that was it.
What do you got?
Okay. This was sent to Lisa on August 25th, and it was forwarded to all of us from Lori McCarthy on 21 Kramer Road. She's asking, can a sign be posted at the top of the street that advises drivers that Kramer is not a through, through, through street to cut down on the speed? Um, so my question is...
It's speed enforcement.
Do we have to create a law?
The sign, the sign's not, not a through street, it's not going to prevent people from speeding. If it's a speed issue, it's speed enforcement.
So get the policeman there?
Exactly.
Okay. Done.
While we're on the topic, um, in our neighborhood, there's a lot of kids running around because we have good quality asphalt, and so the gateways, uh, it's Fortini and Wiltrumper, they don't have like the slow children sign, get the little, the kid with the niggers kind of slow down.
What color niggers?
What color niggers? Can we put two of the, one each gateway for...
Yeah, we had, where do we put those signs that had the heart on it?
By school, yeah, North Park Road, yeah.
Please drive slowly, we love our children, had the red heart on it.
Yeah.
Do a few of that.
We actually have about 36 little kids.
I know, I saw that Sunday, it was over there.
You've got a bunch of grandkids over there, huh?
Right, right, yeah.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay. Minutes approval. Uh, April 12th was the, uh, public hearing for the budget. Any additions, admissions, or corrections? I had gone over a few minor typos with Lisa on it. Motion to approve?
I'd make a motion, we approve this submitted.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. May 14th, board meeting, again, there was a couple typos. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed, so voted. Uh, May 28th, and again, a couple of minor typos.
Do we want to make a change to this here? Because it says adjustments should be done after the board approved. Needs to be done.
Alright, so...
This is the 28th?
28th. Your trustee, Stowe, or...
That should be made in these minutes though, because it wasn't adjusted that time, so it would be adjusted this morning.
Say again?
I can't change the minutes from that night.
Those aren't approved, so they're not minutes yet, they're just drafts.
Right, but I can add what you decided to add.
We would have to vote to amend them, but they're not approved minutes yet. Okay, so, let me get to the right spot here.
It says adjustments, it's 2:31 here. No, this one, sorry. This is the 28th?
Why don't we just add them, like, let's just...
Right here, okay, I got it, alright, so, I'm going to make a motion to amend the minutes to read that water and sewer adjustments should be approved by the liaison, and then submitted for approval to the board at their next meeting. Got that, Lisa?
Yep.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
If it's not going into practice until after tonight, then where are we amending the minutes from? Because that's actually what was said.
Yeah, you can't say, that's what I'm saying, you say amend approval of board at the next meeting, we're a couple meetings beyond.
Correct, but we're correcting these minutes.
What do you...
Okay.
Okay? We're mending these minutes to reflect that this is what our policy is.
I got it.
Okay? Alright, we have a motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed, so voted. Okay, I need a motion to, uh, return to regular session, please? Or motion, actually, motion to return to executive session.
Second.
So voted. Alright, now we can have some Heinz on the side. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. I need a motion to return to regular session.
I make a motion, we return to regular session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Okay, Heinz, go ahead.
I want to make a motion to expend $4,450 to reduce on selective, uh, union, uh, fixing of the asbestos areas that we had in water plant and in the building here.
Is there a second?
We saw three quotes.
I had three quotes.
Within the procurement policy and...
Yeah.
Second. Any discussion?
I have a question. The, uh, when you're talking about removing, demolish, removing the tank, obviously that does not include removal?
Absolutely.
No.
You have a separate quote for demolishing and removing the tank, so they're going to do...
The option we're approving here is one and five.
Right.
So those two items come to $4,450. If we were to choose to do the other issues, wrap tank, remove and dispose, and demolish the tank, then you got to add all those side figures in.
Yes, my question, so if they're going to remove the tank, that doesn't include the stuff on it?
No, no, no.
If, if...
There's a price to demolish and remove the tank, and there's a price to remove the, and dispose of the asbestos, those are separate figures. So you would have to add this number, this...
They have to dispose of the asbestos first before they remove the tank.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep. And that's why the encapsulation, the, uh, is the better way to go, because you're talking 46, uh, and another six grand roughly.
And, and it doesn't seem right, you pay them to encapsulate and then pay them, but it doesn't take you apart.
And you have to monitor them.
I understand what you're saying, but the quote, as it, as it looks, it...
Okay, but, are you talking about BSD?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, look, look.
The model, this is, this is what we are voting on, I know, right here.
We understand that part, but, can you look at this, Heinz?
The reason that is lower?
If they encapsulated, it would be that much, if they wrapped the tank, it would be that much, if they removed the asbestos and disposed of it, they would charge that much, then they would demolish and remove the tank for that much.
Okay. So you can't have remove and demolish.
They can't have encapsulate and remove and demolish.
You have to...
The option is either encapsulate, or remove the asbestos and dispose of it, and destroy the tank. Okay?
Okay.
Everybody understand this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second, any further discussion?
Is it all going to come out of the water budget?
Yeah.
No, you shouldn't take it out of yours.
Because you can get your heater, the heating, the heating system, with a meter, that's, that's all water related. The heating system is kind of incidental.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second, is, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Any other business? Need a motion to adjourn, please?
What do you adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Thank you, everybody.